They've expressed a number of concerns, not all of course which were planning matters, but those that were were the Elms Road, they're used as a rap run, I assume that means the new Elms Road, reference to the tree last which I think we've already covered through Emmy. So the other points we're not quite able to comment on, might be traffic volumes and restrictions, avoid that becoming a rap run.
Yeah, in terms of the Elms Road link, it's, as you've seen on the presentation slides, the link obviously is designed to go from Wellington Road through to Shute End. Through the assessments of the application, it was determined obviously to leave the junction with Shute End as itself. I know there was some request for it to be changed to a demand style junction, but obviously by doing that, and obviously you do, it's demonstrated that encouraged traffic to actually use that route, and it's not the intention to have it as a main route through the town. The main route obviously is Station Link Road, which is up and operational and is operating very well at present. The benefit of this road, obviously it allows connection to all the facilities including the existing Moxory Car Park and provides connection from, you know, obviously the north and the south. It's designed to have a 20 mile, it's designed with a 20 mile an hour design speed, and therefore it's sufficient, obviously, for the use of cycling requirement through the town. In terms of signage, that is obviously going to be key to be stuck on the main Wellington Road, Station Link Road, and it's not intended to have clear signage through that part of the town who has a through route. And I think also just to revise that, through the assessments, it's indicated to have around 360s, 360 vehicles in the peak hour, which is roughly equates to about six vehicles per minute compared to about 1100 on Wellington Road due to Wellington network conflicts.
Okay, so just one other point I think I forgot to mention was raised was loss of parking. Could we just confirm the current situation in terms of number of parking spaces in the town, and the level of intensity of use, and then what the end position would be if this development goes ahead and all of the other aspects of the town centre regeneration? We'll get to members' questions.
I think in terms of the car parking, the council has, this obviously is the regen team, in terms of the council itself, it has a parking strategy and a long-term vision for the town. And in terms of what the council strategy is identifying, the regeneration team have obviously brought into that and provided what needs to be provided for the application. The council has done a number of assessments of the car parking over the last few years, and we've got obviously the existing supply and obviously the demands required, and obviously there are a number of car parks that, there's a few that decrease in size, but obviously as you were, the planning committee a couple of months back, we had the Carnival Ball application, which has the increase of the car parking from 165, I think, to 529, which is increasing 364. So overall, the existing supply that we have is 1836 spaces, and we're going to have an 1895 spaces when all of the development is completed.
Okay, so what's the current capacity, is that 1836, I know you do assessments on this, is that 1836, is it always jam-packed or spaces, or is it presumably filtering out the town centre car parks more, more popular and places like these, so you're potentially best off?
Yeah, I mean, it's a matter of, it's part of the council's long-term strategy as well as to identify the car parks at the edge of the town, which has come from the south, you've got the Carnival Ball coming from the west, we've got the Moxory Car Park which can access from Elmsfield, the Elms Road link, and the East Albers Road obviously coming from London Road from the east. In terms of the provision, the levels have been looked at, we always try to keep and retain a 20 to 15% spare capacity in the car parks, and that's been taken forward with the assessments of the study taking into account the regen of Elmsfield, Rose Street, and obviously Carnival Ball.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so we'll now throw this open to the members of the committee, and it's customary that we go first to any member of the committee who happens to also be a Ward member, and that's Chris Singleton, Ward member, so I'm straight to you, Chris.
Thank you, Simon. I think when we look at this application, there's always going to be, plus it's been referred to earlier this evening, there are pros and there are cons, but I think that if you look at, I've lived in central Weybridge for 30 years now, and one must be struck by the, by the decline, and we've got to do something about it. I think we see Bracknell has gone and always going ahead with its regeneration, we certainly need to be doing this. I think though that we need to be aware of what the harm in some aspects is, and to then take a view of whether the harm is outweighed by the benefit of the regeneration. I think there's been a lot made about the height of the buildings. On the north side of Elmsfield, there are already four-storey buildings there, that's not an issue, but I think if we look on the west side, I think if we look back, Mark said about, from 2006, I mean, we were talking, I remember, we were talking about much like probably three-storey buildings, we're now up to four. I think maybe there's a picture which, if we can go back to that and to look at how that fits in with the pavilions, to get an idea of scale. Yes, that's it, so, I mean, it is hard. And it begs the question, because whilst we're not here to talk about viability, nonetheless, we certainly have to consider the viability, and my, I suppose my question really here is, is the fourth floor, or it's three and a half, is the fourth story essential from the point of view of viability for the overall scheme?
I think, Chris, we're straying out of planning areas, because as we've previously discussed, the viability arguments are not something the planning committee has, has available, was able to scrutinise. I think the issue is, we have to decide upon the application that's here in front of us. As I said at the beginning, it was not the wrong of the planning committee to attempt to redesign the application.
Okay, Simon, I think one thing which perhaps talked to me, brought people's attention, thanks very much by the way, officers have been really good, I've put a load of questions through, I've had a lot of emails back and some very good drawings, Emmy, there was some drawing, I was concerned about shadow from the higher buildings. Are those, are those drawings available to put up on the screen, Emmy?
I think again, the audience, this relates to the fact that the buildings proposed on the west side nearest to Albert Road at four-storey have the potential, because obviously the evening sun will be setting to the west, I guess you're concerned about the potential shadowing, particularly in the winter months.
Yes, and in fact, it's, the drawings have been done, as I can see roughly around the, around the equinox, in fact, as we go through the day, Emmy, perhaps go through to five o'clock, which is as far as it goes through there, that's as far as we go, so five o'clock, so if we think about people coming home from work, they want to go to the park, it's not going to be five o'clock, by six o'clock, if you extrapolate from that, we're probably going to have most of the park in shadow. Now, I just raise it, it's, it's, it's an issue, and it really comes back to this question of compromise, that it is an issue, it does, there is harm in terms of the enjoyment of that park compared with the arrangements at present. I think the traffic, the, the idea of the, this through road through Elmsfield, that again was an addition after the original proposal came about, at some stage, we introduced the road going through Elmsfield. Now, I think if we think about the enjoyment of the park, do we, is that 380 or is it, or is it 760 miles?
It's two a.
It's two, so it's 760.
No, no.
So it's about a third of the level of traffic that we've got on Wellington Road at the moment. Again, we need to think about that, I understand why it's been done, we must have some redundancy in the road network, but as our traffic grows, we must be able to accommodate it, but I think we need to think about that in terms of the impact. I think noise has also been touched on, it's, concerns about, deliveries has been covered, I notice, in the members' update, so there's no question there about the deliveries disturbing the residents there, I just wonder what protection there is in terms of the entertainment, the sort of hours that one could anticipate there and the impact that's going to have on the people who will be buying these houses.
Entertainment will be covered under a licence from environmental health, so any events held within the park will be covered by that, so we don't see the need for a planning condition or duplicate other controls.
Yes, I mistake, there is a condition requiring licensed premises, restaurants, not time to open up doors after eleven o'clock at night, because I think they're open till midnight, so they have to be in after eleven o'clock at night, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct for the use of the building.
So that would have, I think the other thing, Chris, obviously, since what is proposed here is all new, one assumes that anybody who is seeking to buy residential property there is aware that it is in a town centre environment, will be with the park in front of it, and then will be surrounded by other activities, some of which will go off later in the evening, so I think that's an element of, of why they're way out.
Just looking at traffic in general, I think we're going to face a difficult period between the, the growth period, if you like, in traffic, part of which will be attributed to regeneration, and the availability of the northern and southern distributor roads, which will obviously make life easier. I'm just concerned that in that intervening period, we're already, according to figures, Chris, we're already at capacity for the road, I'd like an opinion really on what the impacts will be, I mean, we know the travel spots, the bottom end of Demont Street, that sort of area, what's going to be the impact there on traffic in this major city area?
In terms of the applications in front of us, the, the increase is insignificant when you're obviously comparing it to from forecast base of 2019 with the forecast of including the Bund. So in terms of the junctions, whilst yes, obviously there are elements where they will be approaching capacity constraints, they are operational, and obviously, as you mentioned, the delivery of the SDR and the NDR are parts of key functions of the core strategy for delivering all the regen and the housing within Wokingham and the surrounding SDLs. So I think in terms of the operational assessments we've had undertaken as part of the application and we've reviewed, we see that actually with the scheme in front of us, there isn't, there is no direct issue in terms of the highway network. When you get elements of congestion, like for example when the town, the Broad Street was closed for a number of months and we had a lot of waterworks, you tend to get a lot of redistribution of traffic, and therefore if there is an element where there will be a queue, this is why I think we never get the point where the junctions ever fail to fully operate within their full capacity, is that you tend to get traffic redistributed to alternative routes as we do when we have roads closed like Station Link Road, and then there is a period of time where obviously things will stay at a certain period before the major routes such as the SDR and the NDR are delivered, which then provide greater benefit for the town and providing much capacity at nearly all the junctions, and therefore there would be no need now to deliver abortive works which would actually draw, provide extra capacity in the town, which would not then give us the desired effect of delivering this key piece of infrastructure like the SDR in the future, because you'd be trying to take people back out of the town to use those new routes.
Okay, I think there's a message there that we don't want to spend money, but we 've got to accept a bit of pain in the interim.
No, I mean, no, there is, it's nothing, it's nothing in terms of money, there is no need for those junctions to be improved, they're operating as they are now, they'll be operating sufficiently with the government, and it would be abortive work if we were to do them anyway.
Simon, I'm aware I'm holding you, do you mind if I press on with a few more? Safety, I think one of the questions that's certainly been raised earlier from other residents is the arrangement for pedestrians crossing the road at the Jukes Head, I don't know if you want a drawing there to show, but what are we going to do in terms of providing for safe crossing there, because it does become quite a difficult junction, I think.
It's, it's existing now, obviously there'll be a four farm added to it, and the rap run will be enlarged, there's also the facility of, because HGVs or larger vehicles will be using that route to access the development on the front, the site is actually shifted over slightly, the road is widened and the footpath provided to full specification on the west side, so there is quite some big improvements actually happening as part of that, as well as the public realm which is being formed for all the town centre regen projects and through to the marketplace as well in the future. So I think there's, there actually are some key benefits there from what currently exists, and it hasn't been a scheme, a junction we've identified to have key pedestrian constraints.
Right, can I, just the last things on the parking, there is reliance on parking, as I understand, in front of those houses there. There's a question of timing, when CPE, when, when the civil parking enforcement is going to come in, and whether there's going to be a gap between properties being occupied and CPE coming in later, does that, and if so, does that mean that we are then relying on the police for enforcement, because we do have difficulties in that area of the moment?
No, the CPE is an element of enforcement, but obviously we can apply TROs to obviously put parking restrictions on here, the intention is to have them as there are in many places in the town, you get like two hours, no return of in, two hours for example, and in this, these elements here, they're intended, or partly the intention is to have them, maybe go up to an hour or two hours for visitor parking or for use, for general use of the park or use of the town, but they are intended to be controlled.
So I, I'm not understood from who's actually going to do the controlling there?
The council will, they'll be controlled, yeah.
Thank you. In terms of the overall parking provision, thanks for the figures that you've provided and also given this evening, what it looks like is we're allowing for 20% growth in terms of parking need, and given what we're planning, that actually takes us up to 80% capacity, which is fine in terms of, in terms of normal provision. However, what about this business of the fact that we've got, at the moment, we've got car parks which are, let's say, I won't say nearly empty, but very fully utilised, are we going to end up with a problem in this area where in fact people are going to be fighting over space there because they're not prepared to go to the other end of the town?
I think it's a matter of control, obviously we're looking at ways to control the car parks and how people come in, I think benefits such as the Elms Road link will mean that people don't have to actually go quite a long way around the one-way system or around the town centre, one-way system to access car parks even in the centre or on the edge, and I think it's, I think just the location of the car parks that we have, they're not central, they are spread out, and I think the facilities, the town isn't in one location, it's obviously spread along Rose Street, Broad Street, down Demont Street, and there's a new part of the Elmsfield as well, I think there is a good mix and a good facility in, it's not something we've, obviously built as an issue.
Right, thank you, Simon, to someone else.
Yeah, thank you, Simon, several questions really, I'll try and keep them brief if I may, I'm going back to parking again, Chris, I know you might love this. I reckon that we are displacing from paddocks and the cat ops, there's 270 spaces, that are rough calculation, and I understand that they are to find spaces around the town in other car parks, if I understand what you said to me on the site visit correctly. My comment on that would be, how do you know you're going to find a space? You could be driving around in the traffic and working, which is horrendous quite a lot of the time, how is that going to be managed? That's, that's on the parking side. The, I'm still not convinced about the orientation and the figures we've got for 14 Albert Road, I'm still not convinced on that, I'd like to see that again, please, and talk me through it so we can actually see the orientation and the reasons we're finding it acceptable. Affordable housing, I'm going to raise affordable housing, and I'm going to be consistent on every planning application that comes before us here, if there's a lack of viability, we usually comment to the developer as well, you don't have to build it. Now, the problem I have with affordable housing and the lack of provision in this particular instance is the fact that one of the council's own companies is struggling to recruit social workers, if we don't have any affordable housing, where the heck are they going to live? We need to provide housing within the town for key workers, so I have a problem there with the lack of affordable housing. The comment was made about going to Marlow or Henley, well, I can see why you'd go to Henley because the car park is ATP for two hours, but, you know, I could get on the train to Reading or go to Cambly or Bracknell, you know, you've got some very good shopping centres within striking distance of Wokingham. Where's the last thing I've got to? There was a comment on Place 53 about noise from Spin nightclub bar, I have to say that I, and it was not as part of the police, well, I did work the night shift outside the spin bar, and I have to say I was pleasantly surprised about the friendliness of the natives and the quietness that they had, I think if people think it's noisy, they should try Reading or Bracknell, because that's horrendous.
All right, okay, so, Chris, could you come back on the car parking issues, and then, I guess Emmy on the issue about the Albert Road, the orientation of the, of the existing properties versus the proposed new properties, and we'll have a further look at the showing of what happened.
I think, obviously we talked a bit about the parking and the locations of it, there is a good mix of short-stay parking in the town, so it's, with displacement of parking, you shouldn't have an issue finding something in, since that's where you're heading. Alternatively, the reduction at Shute End, yes, there is an element, unfortunately at the moment, that is all-star parking, so it's intended that some of that car parking will become available as part of the paddocks, so there is a spread, a general spread between the paddocks and the Shute End car park. A lot of that displacement obviously is moving to Carnival Ball, which isn't really that far away, and obviously with the new Elmsfield and the new walkways and links through, that there should be a bit more of a desirable and improved route through. I think just the general displacement of the parking around the town is, is need to be acceptable, if there is enough parking there, that it's intended that people, if you come to work in a real occurrence, you'd obviously get to know what time to get there and is there still spaces. I think one key thing to also add is recently, there are, we already know that there are commuters that park at the Paddocks car park, and you're probably all aware from driving past the station, the Network Rail is currently in the process of decking that car park, that they have a station which will hopefully move obviously some commuter parking from the paddocks, which will free up some additional spaces for everyday users and move the commuters back to the station.
So just to be absolutely fair, the proposed decking, the Network Rail are doing that, I guess doubling in the size of the car parking, then that isn't included in our car parking noise at all, that's not within our control.
That's an extra, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Emmy, this issue again, with the orientation of the, some of the properties on Western Edge against, it was nine fourteen, can we just explore that a bit more, Chris?
I think the, sort of, the council minimum back to planning distance, 12 metres, we've recommended 15 for taller buildings, and the distance shown here is 17, almost 18 metres from the first floor windows to the boundary, so slightly further to the front of the building, so that would be approaching the minimum 22. And I think the thing, when I looked at this, I went through very carefully, took a lot of different measurements from different windows, if you imagine, if you stand at the corner of a building and look on the front of it, you don't actually see into the windows, it's only as you move further away from it that you start getting a view towards the window, and then the distance has increased. So the building here would be looking along, and it would have a very tight view towards the window, so that wouldn't afford to use in, and then as you move further to the south, the distances would be increasing, so that would produce the impact. So having been through all those relationships along there, looking at that whole run of houses, that was what led me to the conclusion, looking at sort of each individual relationship, that the separation distances were acceptable.
Okay, and then, Jamie, could we just, the affordable issue?
I really haven't got a lot to add to what Emmy said, that the council is the applicant in this case, and they have been treated as any other applicant, they've provided information, they've given us a report showing that affordable housing can't be provided without the scheme becoming unviable, we've had that robustly tested by an external independent valuer, and they've endorsed that, that position, and quite clearly, the evidence is, is there for you, there's no way in our policies that we can insist on affordable housing being provided.
Rajesh, ever shown?
Okay, several questions, what's the percentage of Elmsfield that's remaining, no, there's what's being removed in this process? Where else are more key, are there five-storey buildings, flats, or five-storey buildings such as the hotel, I'm not quite aware of them by your own hand? Lastly, where are there three and four stories above shops, if you've shown us pictures of the commercial developments, I haven't seen anything at all, seems out of keeping of Wokingham. And was Elmsfield used as a green space for the developments in the cricket pitch, the football field, and Martin's Pool? And if so, where are we replacing them? How long has the park actually been ignored? A lot of the information is that the park was never really well used, but how long has it been ignored by the borough council? Why aren't we doing this? And I also have some questions about the number of dwellings and the number of spaces, we're talking about the parking strategy, I'd like to also know how many spaces are going to be available for them. And your number of the cars going through the area, is that on you based on half of one car journey per house during a rush hour that you, that you use? Let's see what else, I've got a couple more here. The pictures of the flats you've shown mostly are three stories, but you showed us four and five-story buildings and flats on our briefing, and I'm trying to figure out where these five-story buildings and flats have disappeared to, or are they going to reappear when they actually are built and now on the pictures, but it seems so far. And I'm also have questions about the lack of privacy for nine and fourteen Albert Road from these news, you've shown us again and again these things, but I just have a feeling that, I'm not quite sure how many people are going to be looking out the window and they turn their lights on at their windows, whether they're going to be seen from the street, from the other houses. And, let's see what else is.
Shall we start on those?
Okay, that's enough to start with.
Fine, firstly, just to summarise then, the details of the actual reduction in Elmsfield green space from current as opposed to the proposed and in hard space, the details of that there are five-story buildings elsewhere, and what was the great number of five-story buildings on what's proposed here, so the issues about, issues about parking for the residential, I think it was, is that, Rajesh? Parking spaces for the residential, that that meets our parking standards.
And also whether houses are affecting now the parking that we have, we're talking about we have 80%.
And the, and the issue again about privacy to Albert Road, so firstly, could we talk about the reduction in green space?
Yes, I can just refer you to paragraphs thirty to thirty-two of the report, the application site currently includes 2.84 hectares of public open space, but then the tennis courts are to be re-provided on site by way of contribution to a new facility to enhance what's already at Canley, so looking at the remainder of the site, there's 2.61 hectares at the moment, and in paragraph thirty-three, that's being reduced by 0.84 to 1.78 hectares.
So what's the percentage of the reduction?
I haven't worked it out as a percentage, but I think the key thing is the things that I've already spoken about in the presentation, not only about the area per se, but the usability of the space and the functions that it's capable of fulfilling.
It's about 450%.
We'll get you another one, just confirm that, okay. The other issue was the, relating to the other, other five-story buildings.
There, there certainly are four-story buildings, off the top of my head, I couldn't specifically mention a five-story one, but I think there are a couple of things to say about this, and the only one that's actually supposed to have a four-story is the hotel, which is just the element on the corner, which is a, a location that's been identified for a landmark building, the remainder are four, and what is apparent, if I actually just go back to the section with the pavilions, although the building which height is slightly lower, what you have there is a building of three stories with a large gable, and the design of a lot of these buildings to propose is three stories plus gables and setbacks, so the impact would not be, the impression would not be a lot different to some of the three-story buildings you do get around the town.
So just for clarity, the only building... So just for clarity, the only building that is five-story is that small end part of hotel?
That's right.
There are no other five-story buildings, are there, all four-story or less?
Okay, but she did show us the pictures when we had our briefing, that the ones at the end along Welkin Road were five stories, they added an extra one.
I think you misinterpreted the pictures, Rashad. So we, just for absolute clarity, the only building that is greater than four stories is a small portion of the hotel, whereas fronts on to the Denmark Street there.
What else walking is that part of?
Nothing.
Nothing? So it's colored?
Well, of course, apart from, of course, the notistory car park.
Notistory car park, or the churches. Or the churches firing.
Or churches firing. Okay. Then the issue about parking spaces for residential, Chris, could you comment on how that meets our standards?
Yep.
Sees our standards?
Yeah. I think it's probably fair to put initially, in the town centre location, it's very sustainable, we've proved normally, and we have seen many schemes come through with much less parking. In terms of the scheme in front of us, we have, there's twenty-two houses on Elmsfield. Of those twenty-two, ten have two spaces versus a garage, another ten have two space, two space, two spaces, and the final two have one space and a dedicated garage. In terms of the flats, there's a hundred and twenty-six allocated parking spaces, fifty-seven allocated visiting parking. We have twelve garage spaces included for some of the flats. Basically, in terms of, when we run the provision of flats for our calculator, they're about eleven short on, in terms of allocated visitor. But in terms of being a town centre location, we're actually very happy with the demand that's provided, and the supply that's provided.
And I think, just again, the privacy issues relating to Albert Road, you talked about the actual distances, and you've explained that clearly to us, Emmy, but in terms of the impression of overlooking, the fact, could you just clarify whether the upper-story windows are screen-placed?
Yes, if I just, the, I'll just find a re-elevation that hopefully will help.
Keep your microphone.
Sorry, I'm just going to find a re-elevation to hope will help current car.
Is that the third and fourth stories, or is it the second, third and fourth stories?
Well, the elevation will show all of them. Right, there are two house types that are relevant, so this is one of them, and what you'll see is you've got three floors of accommodation with sort of habitable room windows, bedrooms, and living rooms. And then on the top floor, just there's the one central window in each half of the semis, which is a bathroom window, so that would be of your glade.
So the third and the second floor are not?
No.
That's right.
Well, bathrooms probably would be, but there are bedrooms too, which would...
So those would overlook fourteen, nine, and Albert Road?
Yeah, but at a distance that would comply with our standards. And then, just to show you the other house type as well. Again, you'll see the top floor windows, you've just got high-level skylights, which wouldn't permit looking out, so overlooking would only be from the ground first and second.
The position of the, they're like star windows, skylights, is such that the bottom edge of that window is at the same height as the normal person, so it doesn't facilitate looking out, which allows natural...
That's the second and third story there, not the first and second, aren't they? Because the bottom floor that has the garages is a story.
And that's the ground floor, that's the living room.
So the first and second floors would be in.
Second, yeah, and then third is the skylights.
Okay. Sixty-two. Right, the calculators percentage of sixty-two percent of the green space is retained.
So you're removing thirty-eight percent of the green space.
And in turn, enhancing what?
That was given down by...
Okay. Chris, next.
Thank you very much. I'd like to consider the, that question, the question of public open space, starts the process of application, where members have to decide whether they're going to approve or refuse this application. To do that, we need to consider this matter, because there is a loss. I have it 2.61 hectares, down to 1.59 hectares. And paragraph twenty-six on page sixty-one of the agenda says that paragraph seventy-four of the National Planning Policy framework establishes that existing open space should not be built unless either of these has been shown to be surplus to requirements. The last would be replaced by equivalent or better provision in terms of quantity and quality, where it's certainly not surplus to requirements. Well, either way, you could do, it's not surplus to requirements. I would pay tribute to many of the people who are here tonight, I think, who have supported the retention of Elmsfield as it is. I think their sentiments are genuine and heartfelt. We're not actually here tonight to decide whether it's a good idea, specifically in terms of planning, we have to decide whether we have created a better amenity in terms of open space. And the main difficulty in assessing this, from the point of view of those who would retain the entire area, is that it is not recently, aside from the children's play area, it has not been well-used. And that is, I think, a fundamental point. With the proposal for an improved and larger children's play area, the tennis courts being built at Cantley, and various other things such as cafes coming onto the area, I think it is established, in my view, that there is an increase in amenity. And so on this particular point, I am happy to support the application, but the other things I've come to.
Thank you, Chair. Just on what's pointed out, driving around looking for car parking spaces, would we be actually putting some live signage up in key spots, just sort of telling people where there are spaces? That's, so that's just one question. The second question is, I am concerned at the number of trees that are being chopped down after this development. And sort of following on from that, the residents, when they move in, they may want to prune or remove trees in their garden. And then on page seventy-four, point one oh eight, you mentioned that we're thinking of landscaping those back gardens, so the residents won't chop down the trees. I'd just like that explained to me, please.
Certainly, yes, there is a significant bunch of trees. There are landscaping proposals that propose new planting to mitigate it, and we've also recommended a landscaping condition, because there is potential to improve that further as well through the landscaping condition. As far as the landscaping gardens is concerned, a number of the gardens along the western boundary of the site would be partially overshadowed by trees, which can lead to pressure for their removal. And the thinking there is that by providing landscaping, such as decking on hard surfaces in certain areas, you can provide a new sort of amenity space and kind of give a steer to people how to best use the space to live harmoniously with the trees and not increase the pressure for works to them.
Thank you. And the issue raised about live signage for car parks, getting spaces, I think that's related to that.
Not as part of this application, because the car parking is all to be managed by the council. As mentioned, it's got a long-term strategy for parking, and that is obviously one of the measures that could potentially be considered for this scheme.
Yep. Right, Malcolm.
Thank you, Chairman. Looking at the, back down on the planted proposals, I had several questions, but most have been answered and answered already, so on their agenda of the four. One of my favourite questions is always about roads, their usage, the width of them, what drives on them, and what sort of vehicles they are and when. What is the width of the L-shaped road going around Elmsfield?
The width of the road? Yep, the, oh, sorry. Elmslink is designed with a six-point-one metre wide carriageway, and the developers have done tracking to demonstrate that both HGV, the reason that Argos, and some of the existing serviced units obviously have serviced currently by Elms Road, and obviously that needs to ensure that that's retained, as well as potentially buses for neighbouring residents to consider potential running buses up there in the future. So it's sufficient to comment on that. You'll see that the bend, obviously, on the corner is slightly flared, obviously, to enable for those two large vehicles to pass one another, should obviously allow.
My question was going to be, obviously, what happens when the lorries go down there one day a week, if it's a narrow road, it's going to stop through. And I was also going to ask about bus, but you've answered that now. I do remember seeing on some of the plans, some laybys for parking. Were they, remind me, were they for residents or residents' visitors or passes by, something?
Yeah, it's part of the kind of casual parking, it's part of the short-stay, and it would be managed by the council as part of the parking strategy.
So people shouldn't be parking on the straight bit of road, it should only be used for the laybys, shouldn't be parking on the other bit?
Yeah, that's the intention, it's actually designed with parking bays incorporated in the verge to ensure people don't park on the carriageway.
Thank you. Same question is, sorry. I'm not into particularly percentages of areas and sizes a little bit. Can you give me the dimensions, very roughly, remember I asked you this, I mean, the site of it is, roughly how long and wide is it, I can visualize distance rather better than just give you a percentage or a previous figure?
I apologize, that slipped my mind to check that. If you want to be asking other questions, I can measure it quickly now.
Okay, thank you. Third question, maybe you've heard that already, it's the crossing going from Carnival Pool across to the site. Can you remind me what sort of crossing that's going to be? Is there going to be no traffic light, is there, or is it just pedestrian control?
In the city, there are no traffic lights.
Yeah, okay. So it's pedestrian control. If you, a lot of people wanted to cross it, presumably, what would the impact, do we know what the threat will be on that road's flow of traffic? Because when it's a road, an important part going around to the SLR, if people are stopping frequently on the basis of pedestrian betting buttons, can it be, will it be timed subset it doesn't cause traffic delays? Can it be?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the signals, the signals obviously are much clever in our loops, that obviously the roads detect the queues, and therefore, obviously, it can delay, obviously, the point of where it will allow the pedestrian to cross, obviously on quiet times, and then the pedestrian calls it, and the traffic identifies the reason, the signals identify there's no traffic in the carriageway, obviously, it will put the light on to the pedestrian much sooner. So they are controlled, and in terms of working the road, there is currently a significant crossing currently there, and obviously operates, actually not as heavily as it will be in the future, but obviously operates additionally with the flow.
So it should be intelligent, Emmy, with the right.
Yes.
The last bit is, when we go back to the distances, on the four-story buildings there, though there are adjacent other tall buildings, if they're looking out the windows, they will see a fair amount of brickwork. What sort of screening will remain there or can be added to it as part of the development, so that you don't see such a large area of brickwork?
I'm sorry, I can't start on that.
So he was busy calculating the distances you wanted to do as well. So would you like to ask the question again?
Okay. The four-story buildings, there are other four-story buildings in the area, so I don't have a problem with that. Nevertheless, if you look out your window, you see a lot of brickwork, a tall wall, it can be alleviated by a certain amount of greenery and screening. What is planned by the developers on the boundary, is there any to alleviate the...
Just for clarity, I think you were referring primarily to the...
Yes, is it the western side?
Well, I thought you referred to the four-story Elmsfield flats.
Yes.
Looking out onto the new four-story flats.
Correct.
That's on the northern edge of the site.
Ah, between Ellison Way?
Yes, sorry.
And the situation with Ellison Way is that the line immediately to south of them is currently public open space, and the applicant has proposed to leave an area of the site open. You can see it just, well, just immediately to the south, you've got Ellison Way, the white, and then the green area coloured to the south of that. So the proposed houses would have a private garden, and then a garden store along the bottom of the garden, which would be a single-story structure. And then the area beyond that would be a landscaped area within the development, but it will still provide an outlook for the Ellison Way neighbouring properties. I think it's not a matter of the application, but it's something for the applicant to see how that is, whether they maintain that within the site or pass it over to the neighbouring residents.
Distance, that was the last one.
Are you open?
I haven't got that yet.
In that case, we'll move on to another question, and we'll come back and give you an answer on that, as we're going along. John Kaiser, next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, thank you, Chairman. I have a couple of questions, I had a few more, but I think most have been answered now. The first one is around affordable housing. This is obviously not the type of investment that a commercial entity would enter into it, an investment in the town centre as much as anything else, so it's a civil investment for the town centre. I think we can probably solve some of those issues if the, if the developers or council submitting the application consider some of the new emerging policies from the government around starter homes. Starter homes are in fact going to be designated as, I understand, as affordable houses, and they are in fact full-price houses with a twenty percent discount paid by the government. So maybe that's something that we could consider with these houses, so that may solve some of the affordable housing problems. The other issue that I'm concerned about is, it's very difficult when looking at photographs, the cladding and the frontage of these buildings, especially if there's plans to use any wood, they deteriorate extremely quickly, and they can get very scruffy. So I would like to be sure that we have some reasonable controls over the materials that are used on the front of the buildings. And that's really just about, the only other thing I'll bring in, I just asked Chris, I noticed here dangerous by design, that isn't waiting to happen, and I do assume that if these are dangerous, these pillars, we won't be putting them in, and this is purely for illustration purposes.
Yeah.
Chris, you'd like to go first?
So just on those points, yeah, I mean, obviously, we are aware, I mean, in terms of the scheme, the design's pretty impressive, but obviously, once you get planning approval in, it's to get the future detailed design, and obviously, that will be picked up as part of the detailed design for the section thirty-eight, two-seventy, for all the delivery of those elements, and the required visibility displays, et cetera, will be built into that design, and safety orders will be carried out as required.
And note your point about emerging government policy on starter homes as opposed to, that's obviously not directly related to this, but it's something we can look to see, it can be related to in the future. Emmy, have you managed to get this memo for us?
I'm just about to, but do you want me to talk about materials while I'm doing it?
Yes, please. I think the one thing that was apparent from all the elevators that we've been shown is that they, quite a wide variety of finishes to break up what is obviously quite high buildings, and to make them, there is no one particular style in working, that's one thing that's certainly very obvious, and has always been the case. Actually, if you could show a couple of those, might be just useful as a reminder, to see the variety of different frontages we've got there.
Yes, I will do that in one moment. Yes, so that's one of the streets we should see, showing the proposed dwellings, and what is proposed is predominantly a mix of brick, using a sort of orangey-red, as would be found typically in Wokingham. And you do get quite a variety within the town centre anyway, so I would expect that it would all be all through wood brick, but you'd have some fucking variation within that. And you could render, which again is something that is very common, we found in pretty wide shapes in the town centre. And there is certainly no intention to have any timber padding within this development, it's just not so... And there is certainly no intention to have any timber plading within this development, it's just not something that would be characteristic of the town. And then we'd be looking at a mix of clayton, clay tiles. Very roughly, even quickly done, but about 100 by 157 metres.
Yes, thank you, Simon, some very quick things. Can I be assured that the internal space standards meet our requirements? We seem to have glossed over the comment from the resident number nine, that it's going to cost him 16K to sort out this boundary, if I'm correct. And I really am mourning the loss of trees. I hate to see trees go because they do help with global warming, whether you accept it or not, but they're useful things to have around. What I'm really struggling with here is the fact that the planning application appears to be acceptable. Which is what I have to decide it on. I can't, I'm struggling to find a planning reason to turn it down because I don't like a lot of this scheme. But I can't find an actual reason, a planning reason that would stand up to scrutiny. So I just want to say.
Okay, well, internal space standards, could you give us a confirmation on that?
Yes, we're fully compliant.
The tree retention issue. I think one of the things is that some of the trees, it has been suggested that are currently scheduled to be removed could actually possibly be retained. But the works that have been undertaken could put the structural integrity of those trees at risk. And as a council, we shouldn't be doing things that create risk. Clearly that has to be balanced against the value that trees add and clearly there are some nice trees in Elmsfield. A number of which will be retained, sadly some of which will be lost as in many developments we lose trees. But as we've seen, new trees will be planted. I fully accept that new trees don't look like mature trees straight away, they take a while. And in fact, if you plant mature trees, they tend not to take very well and smaller trees that tend to grow more help. So just to, I understand your concerns and I would certainly ask the officers to work as far as possible with people from trees and landscapes to try and ensure that every tree that can be retained safely is retained. And we've heard that internal space standards are met. Rochelle? Sorry, number nine? I think issues about boundary cost is not a matter for the planning, that's a civil matter. Excuse me, ma'am. We've just been told the computer link next door has gone down, so we're going to invite the 15 people who are next door to come in and stand at the back. So if you just bear with us a moment. Thank you, so welcome to the speakers who've joined us from the main council chamber. I understand the sound went down, hopefully you can all hear us very clearly now. We've reached towards the end of the main part of this meeting. And we've just covered some issues on space standards and tree retention. And Rochelle, you wanted to add some additional points and then back to Chris Barry.
Yes, it was mentioned that starter homes might be useful. I'm not quite sure how affordable, how affordable they would be at £400,000 a home. 20% off of that is about £80,000 off of that. £320,000 seems like a lot for a beginning social worker or clerks in the store. So I'm not quite sure that's actually reasonable. But I still didn't get my answer for the question I had. Was Elmsfield actually used as a green space for the developments in the cricket pitch, the football field and Marty's Pool? Was it used in any of those as the green space for them? It was ignored, but I got the answer.
Could we get an answer on that? I think what you're saying, just to understand your question, are you saying that the loss of places like Marty's Pool many years ago, whether the existence of Elmsfield was used to?
To justify that and justify the cricket pitch and the football, every other green space in Wokingham that's left. And this is the last?
Well, let's just remember the cricket pitch was in private ownership, was nothing to do with the council.
But it's made into houses, they still had to have green space in place like a?
They did and they had to provide, but remember the application you referred to was refused by this council and it was allowed by the planning committee. And so as far as we know?
I think it would have been a, an amenity space that would have been taken into consideration in the assessment, so did recent applications like the Cricket Club one and them. But it would have been part of the sort of overall package. And I think the fact that we're looking at it now as an existing space and then improving and mitigating the loss of it. And the existence of it is being carried forward and we continue to provide an amenity for people within those developments.
Chris, come back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of points on condition 17 on page 21. There is no, I think there's no indication of phasing in this planning application, so I don't know what all the things are going to be done. This condition saying no part of the development here by the applicant should be occupied until a servicing management plan has been submitted. If the applicant wants to build the children's play area, first of all, they don't need to have a servicing management. Shouldn't that be, shouldn't that be altered slightly? And the other point is, I don't know whether the food store is going to be selling newspapers, but newspapers are normally delivered early and no delivery is contained place before 8am on Sunday and not at all on bank or public holidays.
There is a slight update to condition 17 in the November update actually, which deals with the bank holiday point. And deliveries for the food store would be possible under the conditions, oh, sorry, George, about the Sundays. I wouldn't. Yeah, I think, I don't have an answer to that if there was early morning delivery such as that. For that specific point. Sorry, there was another part of your question which I've forgotten.
The first bit. I just said, if the applicant wants to build the children's play area, why does it necessarily have a servicing management plan? Surely it's safe or development of the store or hotel, maybe not everything?
Okay, I think this is more a question about phasing.
Yes, I mean, I think it's likely there will be an element of phasing within the development. And one of the early conditions, I think something like condition three requires detail for phasing to be submitted. And I think it's important that we have details of the management plan right at the start because there's so many sort of uses that are kind of interdependent. So it's not only relevant to the uses of courses that are in special, the term bringing forward residential development. You need to know that measures are going to be in place to protect the amenity of residents with all development and joining as the commercial owners come forward as well. So I think it's something we need to go into your, from the start, thinking of implementing the phase way.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Most of what I've listed down here, we've gone through, the answers don't necessarily agree with them. But along with Bob, I think trying to find a planning reason to refuse this is going to be difficult. But I did want to go back to Albert Road because I did feel that people who live down there, I fully accept your point. But the minimum is 15, we're achieving 18. But is there anything we can do in terms of conditions of screening?
Well, when we saw on the site visits, some of the existing trees along that edge, some are within the control of residents of Albert Road. And some on the other side of the boundary in the control of the council. My understanding is the council's position will be where possible, the trees, obviously the trees on the Albert Road side are totally within the control of those residents. But the ones on the council side of the boundary, that there will be attempts to retain trees or to trim trees back where they intrude unnecessarily into the gardens of the proposed new houses, is that correct?
Absolutely right and looking to reinforce the planting where necessary and possible as well.
Right, members, I'm going to try and draw this to conclusion. We've had a very thorough discussion on this, we've covered a number of points. I thank all the speakers and the committee members for doing their updates to stick to the matters that we're here to discuss tonight, which are planning matters, not any other matters. So the first question I have to ask is, we have a very clear recommendation on page 13. But does anyone, any member wish to put forward an alternative proposal to that? Rochelle?
I would like to reject the application based on the fact that it's massive, overbearing and out of keeping with the rest of Wokingham.
Right, Bob, is anybody wishing to second that proposal? Oh, okay, so we have two members of the committee who would inform you in terms of proposal. Firstly, put that item to the vote, so does any members of the committee, those members wishing to support that proposal, please indicate. And that's two votes, so that fails. So we now come to this. So, well, those against that proposal? Okay, so we now come to the substantive item, which is the recommendation on page 13. And under the avoidance of doubt, I will read that out as amended. The planning committee resolved ground planning, which is subject to no new substantive planning issues raised during the remainder of the consultation period, which ends on 6th April this year. The contributions to mitigate the impact of the development in terms of sport on the tennis bases heat special protection area in accordance with paragraphs 31, 189 and 202 of the report and the executive resolution on 28th of January 2016 and the conditions below. Now, just remind members, there are 60, six zero, planning conditions attached to this application, which I think is more than any other application I've seen in terms of trying to address reservations that people have had. So we have a very clear recommendation. Members wishing to support that, could they please indicate?
Chair, members update, conditions there?
Yes, well, that was referred to in conditions below, that's all that's on the members update. The members wishing to support that, could they please indicate? Those against, so the planning application is approved by seven votes to two. Thank you. And we now have a second application to consider, which relates to the temporary use of old tennis courts for car parks. So if you wish to leave, please do. Everyone has just settled down, we have another application to consider tonight, which is planning application 160523, which starts on page 139 of your agendas. And that is an application for change of use from outdoor sports area to temporary car park with 96 spaces plus temporary lighting and formation of a vehicle access linking to the padlet's car park. And I think all members are aware that what this relates to is the council's reaction to network roles. Failed to listen to us in the first place when we suggested that the new car park should be decked. And they felt it was unnecessary and a year later they suddenly, it is necessary. But didn't appear to make any appropriate provision for the users of the station car park. So this is the council stepping in to provide a short-term temporary solution to try and assist with the sudden and unexpected demand of additional parking in the town centre created by the culture of the outside car park. So goes straight across to Emmy.
Thank you, Chairman. I think you've probably pretty much covered my presentation. There is a great deal to say. It is the proposal for the temporary use of the tennis courts within Elmsfield just to mitigate the parking issues while the decking of the station car park takes place. There are a few photographs in the presentation, but having been out there only last week, I think everybody's pretty familiar with what's there. And that just shows the proposed layout for the temporary use. And if I could just then refer you to page five of the update. The, there are a couple more consults, or one more consultation response to the committee. It is an objection due to the loss of trees, loss of amenity due to hard surface being unavailable for recreational use. And sort of amenity, noise and smells. And I think there are things that issue that have already been addressed in the report. And then there's just an amendment recommended to condition four, which relates to the use of continued use of the basketball hoops that are there while the car parking use is taking place during weekdays. So there's just a tweak to that condition to allow for signage to clarify that they shouldn't be used while the car parking is going on. So other than that, this is recommended for approval as per the agenda.
Okay, we have somebody ready to speak. I must admit I was somewhat startled but realised it was my vision failing when he said that I read as prior to the use of the site as a car park works to improve detonation of the runway system. Exactly, detonation of the runway. Right, okay. Well, firstly, we've got speaker Mr. Hunter, is someone who'd like to address this again on this particular item? You have up to three minutes.
Okay. Got a couple of slides as well.
Oh, right, okay, well, don't, don't start.
Don't start me yet, hello, we've got a bit of time for organisation. I might speak as quickly this time because there's not so much to say. Are we on?
Yeah.
The council's not demonstrated that there's a need to use the tennis courts as temporary car park. They've not put forward any supporting application, evidence in the supporting application. In the most recent traffic survey conducted by the council back in 2014, it states that there's current supply of car parking space of 1886, which is mentioned earlier. And that of those is normally 612 spare spaces, which is 32% spare spaces as it stands at the moment. And as Council Murphy keeps telling us, the town centre is continually being run down, so one would assume that in the next two years there will be less people using the town centre and so more surface car parking spaces. We've probably heard that the council is going to have financial difficulties in the coming financial year and they're going to have to save cash. So why are we spending lots of money providing unnecessary parking spaces? To me, it just seems like they're doing this to make Elmsfield keep more rundown, supporting the previous application. And you're probably thinking that these spare spaces are evenly distributed across the town. But as you can see in that car park there, I'm sure you will recognise it, I don't need to say where it is. You can't start a single car in there. So quite clearly there is masses of space and you not need to waste any money on this scheme. And but look at the other slide as well. That's actually as it appears on the council website, and I know you can't see what's on there, but that is what the amount of effort has been put into this scheme. It's purely a waste of money and the office's car builders have come up with decent plans that we can all read. And furthermore, this so-called temporary car park is meant to be used by council employees. Why can't they go eco-friendly, use car sharing, carpool, cycling and so forth? And it's also right at the centre of the transport hub in the town. And so I just can't see why it's necessary and I'd love someone to explain it to me.
Well, fortunately, Mr. Hunter, we don't have to explain it to you, we're just a planning application, but considering tonight not matters of policy, cost or need or suitability. But I think it would be fairly obvious that, for instance, if East Hampstead Road car park is set on the cheaper car parks and does somebody have space, don't like it to be used by station users. And the fear is the station users will start parking roads causing congestion, affecting traffic flow. You also mentioned the cost, the cost isn't an issue for the planning committee, they're going to pay and decide this. Hence of policy, which is what we should do. Any members wishing to speak on this? Firstly, I'll go to the residents for one member.
Just one small point there, so page 140, condition three. The car park new section, land reinstated to its former use. I'm just a bit concerned that we're spending money that we don't need to do. What's the reason for that condition?
I raised that at the site visit, I think that was reflecting the fact that this should be looked in isolation. And we had no knowledge at that time, the earlier planning application that has received approval tonight would be receiving approval. If that hadn't received approval, we would have needed to look, because this is a temporary measure to determine.
Use the point I raised.
I'm sorry, stop the public participation, then.
Remember the application that we approved earlier, was only approving the application, doesn't mean it's actually going to be built. It could not open, so you do need that condition.
So that, excuse me, so that in actual fact, it could be waived there? If necessary, yes, subject to the council agreement, by the way. Thank you, okay. Rochelle?
I'm just curious why we're not using the multi-story car park that no one else is using behind Virgin Active instead? Just curiously, save council money, save taxpayers money, that kind of thing. Just curiously, save council money, save taxpayers money, that kind of thing. Did I ask Chris? We have an existing car park already, so why not use that?
It's, yeah, it's not part of the process in front of us and that's, I think, the basis of where this assessment's come from. In terms of work has been done with Satwesh Trains to try and get them obviously to, obviously come up with something else. In terms of the car park, the multi-story car park, my understanding is obviously people have, essentially my understanding is the situation, that people have permits to park human paddocks, for example, and the car park, there's obviously, the multi-story car park isn't, whilst it's run by the council, I don't believe it's owned by the council and therefore, obviously, I don't think it's that easy just to transfer people to that car park.
Has it been tried?
My understanding is, conversation I've had, that in terms of, in terms of the application that's in front of us, it's a car park, temporary car park, which actually there is no issues in terms of highways that prevent it from being there. In terms of the highways, for me, to move someone from one car park to another, isn't really part of the assessment.
But you said also, we had so many spare spaces in the car park, so why can't we use some of the other spare spaces in the other car parks to have the council...
Rochelle, sorry, it's not a planning matter, is it? As we said at the beginning.
It just seems to go with...
It's others' responsibility to justify this, we've got to do the planning. Okay, Tim?
I have three questions for you. Do we need a condition for opening hours of this car park? Secondly, do we need a condition of something to prevent people using it other than a car park? And my third one is, you've added, you've amended the condition about the bits of signage up for the basketball hoops. I thought condition has to be enforceable and I wonder who's going to enforce that sign saying, please don't use the basketball, the nets. So I was wondering, I know I'm not meant to give a, how we could overcome it, but could we not make the net portable so we could take it down when they're not meant to use it? Otherwise, I can see them just dashing the cars, taking no notice.
Fair point explained by Tim there, so there was, no question.
No planning.
Do you elaborate?
Chairman, we could add an informative to request that the applicant does that.
Okay. So wishes the committee that we should have that informative?
But is it a planning?
Sorry?
Is it a planning? If the other thing works, it is a planning.
The informative is not a condition, so it's advisory. It's a suggestion by the committee, so I think we could include that. I'd like to raise a point, which is to do with lighting. We've got temporary lighting here. That lighting, I think, is the goal for a certain time in the night here because of its proximity to residential areas. I'd like to actually see a condition inserted now, tonight on that, because I don't know what the pressure would be, but I don't know what time the lighting goes off in the main car parks. Matter of interest, do you know what time the lighting goes off in our car park?
Midnight.
Midnight, okay. Do you know that happens to cover paddocks as well?
Yeah, that's our car park.
Paddocks is always a... I would suggest leaving the lighting on till midnight would be a reasonable condition.
We could condition to keep the same hours as... We could condition to keep the lighting on the same hours as the paddocks car park.
But I suspect paddocks car park, which has been in existence a long time, may be lit all night.
Doesn't go off.
So, members, I'm proposing the addition of a condition saying that the lighting should be off at midnight unless otherwise agreed in writing to avoid it causing undue disturbance to the residential areas there. It's going to be, you know, it's just previously planned, whilst it's only a temporary arrangement and probably, since it will probably only cover the summer months, it may not be a particular issue. So can we make that as a condition five?
Yeah. What time is switching it on?
Sorry?
What time is switching the lights on?
It's like six months, four, six months' time, because it will lock in on us.
We're giving four months.
Sorry? Yeah, but it's expected to be received, as far as we're hearing from the railway people.
Is that a flag?
Well, let's make it very clear, the light should probably be on between hours of midnight and six AM. That comes with the hearing. Right, Bob?
Yeah, just a comment actually about car sharing and councillors sharing cars. I mean, as you well know, you yourself, Simon, we live miles away from this wonderful place we come to sometimes and very often, we're not travelling with co-councillors and our wands, so sorry to hook the car share, but I do what I can.
Just wondering about my journey and using it.
Chairman, I've got two, two questions. I don't think they have one, but I'm going to ask them anyway. How long is, how long is it going to take to do the car park down this station? First question. I'm not involved in the project, but my...
Okay, I can tell you, it's between five and six months.
Okay. Secondly, what happens in June with the car park that we granted permission on?
Under construction.
That's correct. So it means the car park will also be closed down at Carnival Park. So the plans are to use the car park that we've just seen that was empty to take some of the strength from Carnival Park.
Which is some two hundred and sixty places.
That's correct.
Isn't that owned by somebody else and the council can't negotiate it? So you just said we couldn't then?
No, we're going to be in June, we're going to be in June, we're going to be four hundred places that we won't have, that we've had in the town before.
Right. Any other members wishing to add? So we're looking at this application with the addition of a condition five, which will restrict lighting, which will restrict lighting between, to only be on, not again before six AM, which is probably only going to apply to the winter months. Firstly, does any member wish to put forward a opposing protest? Right, so we'll take this application to the vote as detailed in the conditions on page one-forty, the recommendation conditions, as I say, with the addition of a fifth condition as discussed relating to lighting hours. All those members wishing to support this, please indicate. And that is unanimous, very good. Thank you, members. And that concludes tonight's planning committee. Thank you.